Green lights on, good. Good morning, Chairman Sertie, Board of Supervisors, staff and friends. My name is Baron McCain from Maricopa. Supervisor Miller, Attorney Keller, Roberto Rovellis and myself have been coming to Pinal County Board of Supervisors since 2012. That's a fact. I feel that Supervisor Steve Miller, Attorney Chris Keller, Roberto Rovellis are like family to me and have earned my gratitude and respect because of their actions, because actions is an antidote for despair, thus I'm always happy to see them. But as time went on, I've got to know the county attorney and the county sheriff, each of the supervisors and staff, and my family's grown. I'm thankful for that. Everything we do here is personal, because this is family. But the main thing is, I talk at the Capitol, I keep talking to former Secretary of State Ken Bennett, and I speak with the current Secretary of State Adrian Fontes, and I can tell you why, he's always been the same way, just as you have. Since I first met him, and he's a great person, and I know we can trust him. Now, he's a lawyer, and he's a Marine, and I'm Navy, so you can't separate the two. But he, like my son, was a former college professor, and that's why I know that we can trust these people that I've just talked about, because they're family. And sometimes family doesn't agree, but that doesn't mean that we're not family anymore. But at the Capitol, all week, I've been having a hard time trying to figure out how I'm going to get our Democrats in House and Senate to engage. It's like bone teeth. A former athlete and military, I don't have a defeatist attitude. That's what makes this board work, because it's not business as usual. With all the chaos around us, I thank each and every one of you and those behind me, because they keep coming back. And like family, we're going to get through this. Thank you.
Noel Rec.
And Chairman, just for the record, we do have Supervisor Kavanaugh on the call. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Noel Rec from Casa Grande. First, I'd like to congratulate Supervisor Miller on last month's successful community event. At the end of the meeting, I could tell you we're proud of the results, and rightfully so. Your event demonstrated the importance of communicating with and involving the citizens of Pinal County. I urge all members of the board to continue to engage in this type of event. Two topics that struck me during the meeting were water and youth involvement. Supervisor Miller, you mentioned the idea of lining irrigation canals to save water. In addition to that, I encourage the board to follow the ASU study regarding covering the canals with solar panels to limit evaporation while creating another source of sustainable energy production. Discussion also focused on youth involvement in the county. I have a program I attempted to share with local high schools that was not picked up. I'm of the thought, the reason being, public schools are already overburdened and hesitant to pick up more programs. I believe my service learning program could be initiated through the board and area businesses in conjunction with the schools, allowing students to do far more than their volunteer hours without having to ask more of an already overworked school staff. Supervisor Miller, I'd like to request a meeting to give you the details of the program to see if this partnership is indeed feasible. I know your door is open. Looking at today's agenda, I'm happy to see items H, I and J that will bring $4 million to the county for expanded broadband, item O that brings $1 million for environmental concerns, and items P and Q that direct $127,000 to help the homeless. These are things that happen when politicians work together for the benefit of their constituents. Unfortunately, these efforts stand in stark contrast to the Republican-led state legislature, which seems determined to waste time and money on extreme bills that will only end up being vetoed by Governor Hobbs. They have openly admitted their goal is to force her to veto these bills to try to make her look bad and thus advance their hopes in 2024. They are not doing the people's work. I've made this request before, and I make it again today. Please use your voices as citizens and supervisors to influence these legislators to stop this foolishness. They aren't listening to their constituents, but there's a possibility that they'll listen to you. A case in point, my LD 16 Senator TJ Shope, who said the idea of the 10-year voter roll purge wasn't legitimate, and then voted for it anyway. He says he has an open-door policy, but has yet to return phone calls or emails from me and many other concerned citizens. Perhaps he'll respond to you. Again, in the interest of the county and state, please use your status to open their eyes to the damage they're causing with their legislative antics, i.e. Liz Harris. A last note, Ruben Gallego is holding a Zoom meeting on the 13th with a forum to discuss agricultural issues. If anyone is interested, please look at his website or contact his office to be involved. Thank you very much.
Courtney Ramirez.
Good morning to everybody and good morning to the public. I'm here to speak just in general about, again, everything that's happening with our elections in Pinal County. I understand you guys are actually going to be in a closed-door meeting regarding the, I guess, illegal property taxes that have been happening to the public over the last 30 years. Don't know the whole story, but it seems like you guys have been collecting wrongfully from the people over the last 30 years, and Douglas Wolf said, "Oh, well, it's been happening long before me." Who is responsible for that? Is there anybody proofreading the laws before you guys are taking our money? And how much millions of dollars is that going to cost in litigation, along with all the election fiasco happening? The more and more I get involved with trying to speak as a part of the people, you know, I get the fight back that, you know, our elected officials don't have the same belief as I have, and that's great, but we're all concerned, and we all want the best for our community and our towns and our country as a whole. And when our elected officials don't listen to us, this is why our country is the way it is now. And the people are getting really tired of it. We're tired of our taxes being used wrong, being taxed wrongfully. $95 million is already collected in the road taxes, right? That's still held up in litigation on 417 Prop, I think that was, and then 469. You guys wanted to collect, what, another $95 million? And then I think there's another road tax getting ready to hit the ballot, maybe in '24 for more road tax money, that so much is held up in litigation. Again, it was wrongfully, illegally written. Who proofreads those before you guys start taking our money? The American people are getting really tired of the tyrannical BS that is happening with our governments. And I want to remind the people, it is our, in the Declaration of Independence, talks about when the government becomes tyrannical, it is the duty of the people to overthrow it and install a new government of, by, and for the people. We are not being listened to. The elections are screwed up. You guys are taxing and taxing and taxing illegally. And we have to wake up, people, and fight for justice, fight for what's right. And Miller, everybody did appreciate your meeting in Casa Grande. McClure, we'd like to see you in Florence. We have so much going on around us that the people are tired of the road situation, we're tired of the high density, we're tired of the water situation, and we want answers with what's happening with the growth in our area. So, see us in Florence.
Okay, before we go further, Courtney reminded me that we are going to have an exec, and because we have outside counsel, we need to do it somewhere around 10 o'clock. So wherever we are on the agenda, we're going to break, have an exec, and then come right back. Would anyone else like to do call to the public?
Good morning, this is Tom Bean of Casa Grande, Chairman Sertie, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the board. I was pleased to learn that the Pinal County Board of Supervisors has formed a partnership with the Habitat for Humanity Central Arizona. This will provide affordable homes for two families. I hope that more ways will be found to help families to start build equity and no longer pay rent. I further read, Glendale, Arizona broke ground on the first complex to use state affordable housing tax credit. I was pleased to read that the Pinal County Public Defense Attorneys renewed their oath of office. They swore to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. They pledged to serve with integrity and civility. This oath should never be taken lightly. One should serve the people, not a party or personal belief. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Roberto Rovellis, resident of Gold Canyon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. To quote a departed Republican icon, quote, "It's morning again in America," unquote. Yesterday, our judicial system historically proved that no one is above the law. Today, we begin the day knowing that the leader of the once grand old party, the Republican Party, is led by a man arrested and indicted on criminal charges. A sad but sobering reality that must be discomforting for campaigners for higher office in our county, but must guide decision-makers by the board on data, not perceptions, including perceptions underlying proposals brought before this venue. One such example is unsubstantiated assumption underlying consent agenda item AG. Over the past seven years, the Arizona Border Strike Force has expended some $139 million in taxpayer funds, funds spent to, quote, "significantly reduce the volume of human trafficking, drug smuggling, and other criminal activity," unquote. Where's the accomplishment data justifying these costs? Last year, when Sheriff Mark Lamb brought to the board his annual request for the Border Strike Force agreement, I requested information justifying his request for yet more county resources. The sheriff's stand-in that year said he had no data at that time, but would make that information available. Such justification continues to be missing. Instead, we see press releases about Mexican border crossers being responsible for highly public-sized deaths of Americans consuming illegal drugs from south of the border. Some of those victims, people known to some of us. Headlines that, according to a national public radio Ipsos poll, unfortunately feed accurate views by 39% of Americans and 80% of Republicans who wrongly believe, quote, "Most of the fentanyl entering the U.S. is smuggled in by unauthorized migrants crossing the border illegally," unquote. And accurate views that are rebutted by the respected conservative Cato Institute, which recently published results of their study that concluded, quote, "A more accurate summary is that fentanyl is overwhelmingly smuggled by U.S. citizens almost entirely for U.S. citizen consumers," unquote. Conclusions based on the U.S. Census Commission's data from 2018 to 2021. There are other undisputed facts. Fentanyl smuggling is ultimately funded by U.S. consumers who pay for illicit opioids, nearly 99% of whom are U.S. citizens. In 2021, U.S. citizens, et cetera. The point is, let's speak with data backing. And so, I hope you table AG 3 until we receive justification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to a series of possible proclamations. The first one is discussion approval/disapproval adopting April 15th as International Dark Sky Week. Can David Coward speak more to this?
My name is Dave Coward, I live in Gold Canyon, and I, today, am representing Gold Canyon Community, Inc., or GCCI, and I would like to speak on the proposed proclamation of an International Dark Sky Week. A little over a year ago, GCCI, with assistance from the county staff, conducted a survey of our community. One question we asked was, what was the top three issues that concerned our residents? Number two was maintaining our dark skies. With this call to action, GCCI formed a team to investigate and begin the process for Gold Canyon to become a dark sky community. We worked with the Oracle State Park, which is already designated as a dark sky state park, and I think the first one in Arizona. And we're working with the City of Apache Junction, which is also considering some designations. And the town is Superior, and also we are working with the New Regional Park, which is part of its mission is to maintain the dark skies. Several of us have joined the IDA, that's the International Dark Sky Association, and became aware of their goal to designate the week of April 15th to 22nd as International Dark Sky Week. This is a worldwide effort, and it would be a great way for Pinal County to join the international recognition of the importance of protecting our dark sky environment. We in the northern and eastern part of Pinal County have a unique opportunity to protect our current dark sky environment as an engine for a proposed tourism corridor within Pinal County to include the growing astrotourism trend. We hope you will consider this proclamation, officially approve its implementation for Pinal County. Thank you for your time, and I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
So, yeah, I hope that this raises awareness. You're right, City of Apache Junction did look into this, and at one time, you were looking into doing a large swath of land, but that's kind of been pulled back because of the copper mines that need to go 24/7. But all of the residential areas, yeah.
Well, actually, our initial proposal was for a large dark sky region, and we proposed that to the IDA, and they kind of sent us a letter, rather long email. If you read between the lines, say, "I think you're being a little too optimistic."
Yeah.
So, we may downsize our...
And this proclamation, it's not anything official. This is just to look at this and raise awareness, so...
Correct, correct.
With that, does anyone have any questions? I just want to make another comment. I live on the edge, of course, up by the mountain, and when I come out my door at night, I look to the southwest, and I see this glow from Bell Bank Park, and it's just horrible. I know a lot of people enjoy it down there, but it just dominates the whole skyline to the south, and we're going to need to make sure nothing like that gets built. So, with no discussion, no more, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve proclamation adopting April 15, 2023, through April 22, 2023 as International Dark Sky Week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. David, you can now read that proclamation.
Okay, thank you. The title is, "By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors' Proclamation, International Dark Sky Week, April 15 through April 22, 2023. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a natural night sky is a shared heritage of all mankind, and whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-town visitors within the local communities. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which result in significant impacts in the ecology and human health of all communities. And whereas 80% of the world's population, including many people in Pinal County, lives under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. And whereas light pollution represents a waste of natural resources amounting to roughly $3 billion per year of wasted energy in the United States and contributes to diminishing energy security. And whereas Arizona hosts 10% of the world's largest telescopes, including the world's largest optical telescope, and many of the world's most revered observatories, including the Lowell Observatory, the Smithsonian Astrophysical Observatory, the University of Arizona's MMT and Large Binocular Telescope Observatories, Kitt Peak National Observatory, and the Vatican Observatory. And whereas optical astronomy, which is both hindered and endangered by infettered light pollution, represents a statewide capital investment of more than $1.3 billion and an annual economic return over $250 million, including an indirect attachment to more than 150,000 jobs through the aerospace and defense sector. And whereas Arizona is home to dozens of nocturnal wildlife species, including the black-footed ferret, one of the most endangered mammals on the North American continent, and these species rely on undisturbed night environment to hunt, mate, and thrive. Whereas the International Dark Sky Association headquarter in Tucson, Arizona, is a globally recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of the environment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim April 15 through 22, 2023, as International Dark Sky Week. Proclaim this fifth day of April, 2023. We ask each resident of Pinal County to join, not only in observing and pondering upon the important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources."
Thank you. So, another potential proclamation is approval/disapproval of national crime victims' Attorney Kent Volkmer.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Kent Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. We are asking the board to adopt the proclamation and pronounce the week of April 23rd through the 29th as National Crime Victims Rights Week. I get up here every year, and I talk about this. This is the opportunity for us to join the national movement to reaffirm our commitment to not only victims, but the victim service community and all of those that serve in the criminal justice system, to really get justice for victims and give them the ability to begin healing. This year, we have a number of plans kicked off. Some of you may have seen, Pinal County is experiencing a concerning increase in felony DUI and DUI-related deaths, accidents, and injuries. We're actually kicking our, excuse me, this week off the Friday before, so April 21st, with a No Booze Cruise is what we're calling it. So, it's a car show, but we're going to have a DUI vehicle that's been crashed, we're going to have drunk goggles and those type of things, just to give people a reminder of the seriousness of getting behind the wheel when they're under the influence and the dire consequences that can occur. The following Monday, we have Florence Community Meeting. I know Supervisor McClure has agreed to attend. It's just where we talk with the community. We talk a little bit, we answer a lot of questions, somewhat similar to the event that Supervisor Miller had last week that was referenced earlier. On Thursday, the 27th, we have our law enforcement appreciation dinner, in which we recognize those men and women that wear the badge and some of the efforts they've made to actually help victims. So what happens is, we ask each individual agency to nominate essentially a law enforcement officer that best epitomizes helping victims, and normally, there's a good story or two, but we recognize them, have a nice dinner at a local golf course. And then we conclude Friday with a kickball event, Battle the Badges. So we ask each law enforcement team to create their own team. We've got kids that come out. It's just a good opportunity to celebrate, and again, celebrate all of our partners in this system, celebrate our victims, but also just bring the community together and really appreciate what we do to try and make us all safe. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions or discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose an approval of National Crime Victims Rights Proclamation from April 23rd through the 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, you can now read that proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, the Pinal County Attorney's Office served over 4,332 victims and provided over 44,757 individual services. And whereas, being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience. And whereas, progress in improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their own experiences into a force for positive change, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment before the law. And whereas, the entire community has a role to play. And whereas, involving victims helps service providers and criminal justice professionals understand the culture, values, and expectations of unserved and underserved victims who seek assistance and justice. And whereas, engaging victims' communities and learning from leaders about their unique needs helps service providers foster a supportive and culturally relevant atmosphere in which victims can seek help and healing. And whereas, incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve victims will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas, with the full weight of the community and victim service providers behind them, victims will feel understood and worthy of support and begin to heal from the trauma of victimization without fear of judgment. And whereas, National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 23rd to the 29th of 2023, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas, Pinal County is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors, building partnerships and resilience in our communities, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd through the 29th, 2013, excuse me, 2023, as the Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, we're up against 10 o'clock. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So, we're only going to do this one, then we'll do those other exec items at the last, so please, everybody, hold on. The rest of the meeting's going to be very exciting. Rest of the meeting's gonna be very exciting. So. We'll be. I'm gonna just gavel us back into session?
Yes, sir.
We won't need a motion to go back. Okay, we have another proclamation, and this is Peace Officers Memorial Week. Sheriff Lamb.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, might I take just a slight point of personal privilege regarding item number three?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to the County Attorney's Office as somebody who has personally been affected by this. Not only would my son have, he actually had an issue where he was under the influence, had to pay a heavy price for that, but also lost my son, my granddaughter, and my soon-to-be daughter-in-law to a DUI. And just knowing that somebody could have stopped it, I think is very important. So I just want to personally thank the County Attorney's Office and you, the board, for entertaining the, this, for entertaining and allowing this proclamation to be read. I'm very passionate about this proclamation, so thank you very much. I appreciate the point of privilege. As, as it relates to item four, obviously, we appreciate our police officers here in this county, and I, we thank you for the support that you constantly give us. We feel very blessed to live in a community that supports our law enforcement. Unfortunately, sadly, we are, and tragically, we are seeing more and more law enforcement deaths across this country. This is an opportunity for us to remember all of those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, especially those within this county. May 14th through the May 20th, this would be our, our Peace Officer Memorial Week. We also have our Peace Officer Memorial on May 4th, where we, as a county, recognize those who paid the ultimate sacrifice here. So today, we are asking that we are able to read this proclamation, have this proclamation adopted by you, the board, on behalf of those who have paid the sacrifice, as, and remember them through the Peace Officers Memorial Week.
Any questions or discussion? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number four as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to do this without my glasses. I think I lost them anyway. Whereas the peace officers of Pinal County are known for their devotion and dedication to preserve the peace and safety of every man, woman, and child in this county. And whereas the peace officers of Pinal County are engaged in a difficult and sometimes dangerous profession, which at times can lead to the injury, thank you, or even the death of these officers. And whereas each day, the peace officers of the state of Arizona endeavor to reduce crime on our streets and dangers on our highways and roadways, as well as to protect us all from other kinds of crimes. And whereas the peace officers of Pinal County also engage in crime prevention programs designed to further enhance the peace and safety of all citizens. Now therefore, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim May 14th through May 20th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Week, and May 4th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and urge all citizens of Pinal, of Pinal County to recognize and remember the sacrifices of these officers and deputies, I'm gonna add that in there, and their families have made, and the legacy they have entrusted to all of us, proclaim this fifth day of April, 2023.
And I neglected with the other proclamations if, if we should have taken pictures or not. If anybody ever wants a picture with a proclamation, let us know, and we'll surely take the time to do that. So, thank you. Supervisor Miller, what's going on with the legislature?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty slowing down as far as committee meetings and stuff. Last week, though, a lot of discussion on constables on two issues. One, their desire to carry firearms as if they were post-certified, which I, I don't know that that's gonna carry a lot of, or really get through the legislature, but that was one of the things. And then they're looking for a big adjustment upwards on their salaries and their mandated salaries, which has met some resistance, at least from the County Supervisors Association. We'll have to see where that goes. Mr. Goodman, you covered for me yesterday, I believe? If, if, I don't know how that, how that hearing turned out, so if, if you don't mind if I could call upon you for the results of that.
If, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Good. Yesterday, I testified in regards to trying to procure some fundage for our roads, which is something that we've been doing quite often as of late. And it had to do with the connection of Parkway between Casa Gran, or Casa Grande?
Casa Grande.
Casa Grande and Maricopa. With all the influx of industry coming into our county, one of our biggest needs is always gonna be the improvements of our roads and infrastructure, so that we can enhance the ability to move people to and from within our county rather than them leaving our county to go in employment. And so it, we were successful, it did pass yesterday through the procurement. Now it needs to go through and be voted by the Senate, and then from there, it will go into the budget or be a part of the budget process, is what we're looking at. So far this year, we've had a substantial amount of money that has been requested of the state to be poured and put into our infrastructure here in Pinal County. And we've been able to, successful in both the House and the Senate side, and now we'll see how it all goes from here. But that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Goodman. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. It's a, it is a wait-and-see status, I can tell you that. Leo, did you have something?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller. I was just gonna mention that, and thank you to our legislative liaison staff, Tammy Ryle, who shepherded a bill, set a bill 1051. That was, I believe, the fourth bill signed by the governor. And updates for our census population count that enables us to potentially bring for a vote the road excise preservation tax. So that was a big win for us that went through. And so thank you to Tammy, and thank you to, to you both and the legislators.
Okay. With that, we'll go right back to you, Leo, for the city, county manager's report.
A few weeks ago, I think, or maybe it was a couple months ago now, that we had a, an item on our agenda called the Ravens Challenge that had some words on it related to explosives. And so drew some questioning from chairman as to what this event was. There is a lot that goes on at, at our airport and aviation in general in the county. Pinal Partnership's having a aviation forum, and the sheriff's hangar over there in Coolidge tomorrow afternoon. And so we just wanted to show a video of what the Ravens Challenge is as we covered that and let the public know what was going on there.
One. Ravens Challenge is an interoperability exercise where we get military EOD technicians. It's explosive ordinance disposal. That's essentially the military's version of the bomb squad and public safety bomb techs working together on a combined team.
Fire in the hole! This demonstration is more or less used to show different types of explosives, different weights of explosives, solely as a demonstration so that people can see the destructive power of commercial and military explosives.
We don't train, instruct, or evaluate here. When you show up to Ravens Challenge, it's the chance to come out here, run a whole entire set of exercises. Our operators set everything up, we give you all the bane you can use, any tools you want, we'll give that to you, and we'll clean up after you. So what's not to like?
Here is unique because we can put teams on commercial aircraft to train on commercial aircraft. Every team that is here, out of the 18 teams, will get an aircraft scenario. So it's quite unique because it's hard to get on a aircraft that is actually in service to use, as we know the complexity and the cost of an aircraft. So it's, it's a great venue here.
The great thing about your facility here, it does give us that 360 capability to operate the way we want to in a rural situation with minimal constraints beyond safety. So we're following our safety guidelines and everything else put in place, but we can actually do the best practices here.
Pinal County's been very great hosting us several times over the years. They have several 747 airplanes on their airfield where we can actually get inside these, get on them, and run realistic training. That can't be replicated anywhere else but right here, so it's, it's a perfect site for us.
Thank you, Chairman, that's all.
How many, how many different agencies involved?
I don't know for sure off the top of my head, or if we have somebody, public works that knows, but Sheriff looks like he.
Are any excluded, and since we're giving this up, do we incur any costs and do we get reimbursed?
So there's like three questions.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I don't believe there's any cost to Pinal County. There's, I believe, 18 different organizations. It can be like LAPD SWAT, some of the military units, some of the more high-profile units. This is their opportunity to kind of come in and challenge one another, showcase what they do, the different tactics they have. They put bombs in ATM machines. It's their opportunity to come out and really showcase this. The ATF is a big part of it, there's a lot of different organizations. It doesn't cost the county anything, it's a great exposure to the county. The, the people that actually stay there at the airpark while they're doing this, and they, they bring in a lot of people from all over to actually watch this challenge and see how these people do it. So it's a great thing for the county, and it's, it's great for law enforcement.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for your report, Leo, so purchasing report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Tiarra Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for April 5, 2023. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 203026 for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We recommend contracts be awarded to the following suppliers. FHU Law, PLLC, the Law Offices of Adam Jones, Law Offices of Bryson Jones, PLLC, Lynn Legal Consulting, PLLC, Signature Law Group, and the Laura Law Group, PLC, and the Law Office of Timothy V. Nelson, LLC. The term of the proposed contract will run concurrent with the current term of the contract, which expires June 30, 2023, and this contract is used by the Public Defense Services Office. RFP 220226 for Specialty Legal Services. We recommend that Jordan Law Firm, PC, be awarded a contract beginning April 5, 2023 through June 30, 2023. This contract will be used by the County Attorney's Office. IFB 235, or, excuse me, 232528 for roadway pavement marking. We recommend contracts be awarded to the following suppliers. Franklin Stripping Inc., Striping, sorry, Inc., Hulks Construction Services, Pavement Marking, LLC. This contract begins April 17, 2023, and will be used by the Public Works Department. ROQ 233524, CMAR for Elections and Early Voting Building Phase II. We recommend award of the Phase II contract to FCI Constructors, Inc. The negotiated guaranteed maximum price is $27,874,833 with a contingency amount of $4 million. This contract will be used by the Facilities Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendment. RFP 203026 for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We recommend approval of Amendment Number Three to add paralegal contractor services to the contract with the Falduto Law Firm, PLLC. This contract is used by the Public Defense Services Office. Next, the board has requested to approve the following purchases, purchase requests for Pinal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350 governing competition and practicable purchases over $100,000. In the amount of $110,000 for Epiphany Landscaping, Inc., for county-wide landscaping used by the Facilities Department. In the amount of $125,159.81 for Opex Corporation for the document conversion services and mobile scanning used by the Treasurer's Office. And finally, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO number 249076 with supplier Empire Machinery in the amount of $239,167.40 for Caterpillar Telehandler used by Fleet Services. PO 249122 with Care Soft Technology Corp. in the amount of $117,298.17 for an EVS subscription used by the Sheriff's Office. PO 249133 with Dooley Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $173,736.21 for ammunition used by the Sheriff's Office. PO 249135 for Santan Ford in the amount of $105,321.54 for two F-150 Super Crew 4x4s used by Fleet Services. PO number 249136 for Santan Ford in the amount of $157,982.31 for two F-150 Super Crew 4x4s used by Fleet Services. PO 249138 for Santan Ford in the amount of $244,254 for five F-150 Super Crew 4x4s used by Fleet Services. PO 249153 for High Tech Network and Security Solutions, LLC in amount of $249,504.53 for Cisco Security used by the IT Department. PO number 249158 for AT&amp;T Datacom in the amount of $174,039.20 for two Vestas IWS positions used by the Sheriff's Department. And the board has requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition 166721 for Burgess and Niple, Inc. in the amount of $288,059 for Gold Canyon Circulation Station used by Public Works. And Requisition 166828 for CDW Government in the amount of $524,430.50 for Google Workspace Enterprise Licensing used by the IT Department. And that concludes your purchasing division report for April 5, 2023.
Any questions or comments?
Just, just a quick question. What is a telehandler, Public Works? I know you're there.
I wish I knew the specifics, but I don't. That's more of a fleet question. It's for their support of some of our heavy equipment, so I'm not sure exactly what it I'm, I'm assuming it's because it's from Caterpillar, so it's one of our heavy equipment, yellow iron type stuff, and it's in to support some of their maintenance, but specifically what part maintenance and what specific equipment, I, I don't have that.
Okay, so, I mean, maybe like web-based maintenance?
Yeah, it's, it's something like that. It is some type of software type.
They're all hooked up to the internet, all the machines, so it can track. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, I was just curious, like what the heck is that? Okay, thank you.
You did, though. We're good.
I can do some more research if you need specifics.
I'd just like to know what it is.
I'll do.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
It's a forklift?
Forklift for heavy equipment.
There we go, okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Since you asked a question, you have to do the motion.
Oh, now it's on me. Okay, I move, we, we approve the purchasing division report as, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda items, all items are indicated unless someone wants to pull any. I am going to pull AG, and we're also gonna pull AI and AK. Are there any others that anyone would want to pull, including the public? So that's AG, AI, and AK, if someone would make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items from A to AK. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items from A to A K minus A G minus A I and minus A K.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. So let us go to A G. And Sheriff Lamb, I had this pulled because I was under the impression that this whole project got scrapped, but obviously it's not. What all is still going on and what can we do and how is Penal County adapting to this?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, this money was allocated in the legislature last year. They allocated $12 million to the Sheriff's Office, specifically to assist in border-related issues, human smuggling, drug trafficking into the country. They also are allocating another 12 million this year. While I think that the Governor has shown interest in doing away with the Border Strike Force, the money has already been allocated. We have been in contact with DPS. They have every intention of fulfilling the requests that we have made. These requests are for equipment, anything, personnel that can enhance our ability to help them. As far as it relates to Border Strike Force, my understanding is that the name's going to go away, and they're still trying to figure out how that looks moving forward. However, these monies were allocated by the legislature for last year and this year, and I don't know that that's going to change. I think those monies are still going to come, and then we can submit our request to the Department of Public Safety for any items that would help us help accomplish the mission of securing our borders and dealing with human trafficking and drug trafficking. There was a constituent up here today asking about statistics. If you'd like, I can go into some statistics and how this is impacting not just Arizona but Penal County specifically, and why I think these funds are very important to what we are doing.
Maybe without getting too specific, but I think an overview would be very useful.
I'll go like a cattle auctioneer. Over the last two years, we have seen a 377% increase in traffic stops involving human smuggling. We have seen a 461% increase in vehicle pursuits involving people trafficking humans and drugs into this country. We have seen a 600% increase in fentanyl in Penal County. We had 1.2 million fentanyl pill seizures in 2021. In 2022, we were at 1.4 million fentanyl pill seizures. A very staggering statistic. That should motivate you and anybody in here regardless of political affiliation, is last year, 2021, Arizona had 44 children die from fentanyl poisonings. Seven were under the age of one. So when I hear people talk about it's people using it and they're creating the demand for it, there are people that are dying not knowing that fentanyl is part of that. Many of the children and the people that die in this county and in this state that we deal with, that I have to go explain as a sheriff, or we have to explain as a Sheriff's Office to those parents as to why their children got their hands on this poison, which is very difficult, I might add. The majority of those people, they didn't intend on taking a fentanyl pill. Most of those were taking something else, Adderall. They thought they were taking a Xanax pill. Not that this makes it any better, but a lot of people were unaware that they were taking a fentanyl poisoning. The cartel is now putting fentanyl in everything. We are now seeing a new drug come along that is called Xylazine. Xylazine is being found in different places throughout the state. Xylazine is a non-opioid, which means that if you were to use naloxone or Narcan, it will not counteract it. We have saved countless lives in this county and in this state using Narcan on people who are overdosing. I don't even like the term overdosing, who are feeling the effects of the poison of fentanyl.
Is that the horse tranquilizer?
It is a horse tranquilizer. There is no approved human use for it. It is a non-opioid and very dangerous. We also recovered recently what we believe to be gray death. It was in a load of a vehicle that came into this county that had fentanyl pills, methamphetamine, and it also had something called gray death, which we actually had one of our deputies have a negative effect to it. Luckily, we didn't have to hospitalize him. Gray death is a combination of heroin, fentanyl, and carfentinel. Carfentinel is 100 times more powerful than fentanyl. I also heard one of the questions, the Cato Institute remind you, I must remind you that many of these research firms can create statistics the way they want it to suit the narrative that they want, and many of them never step foot in Arizona. People in Washington, D.C. telling us what our problem is here in Arizona. I can tell you firsthand that 50% of the drugs that we catch in Arizona, per HIDA, which is much more accurate than what the Cato Institute is using, which I talked to him specifically, they're using CBP statistics, which is Customs, Border, and Protection statistics. So of course, 90% of what they find is at the ports because that's their area of operation. But if you take HIDA statistics, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Administration, it includes DEA, it includes sheriffs, DPS, Border Patrol, all of them, and those statistics, they say are 50/50, 50% coming through our ports, 50% coming through the non-port. Yes, American citizens are being involved, but that doesn't mean that this isn't cartels. The cartels are paying and recruiting Americans, including our juveniles, to traffic humans and drugs into this country and into this county. We cannot stand by and let this happen. The statistics, earlier it was asked for the statistics. I could go on and on of statistics of not just how it's affecting Arizona and America, but how it's affecting Penal County. We are seeing an increase in fentanyl overdose, fentanyl poisonings in this county. They are continuing to go up, so it's something that we should be actively involved in. It is overwhelming for Border Patrol. They ask for our help consistently. We have the ability to help, and funding has been made appropriate, made available by the legislature through the Border Strike Force for Sheriff's Offices specifically to help curtail some of these drastic numbers that I have been giving you, which are affecting our families here in Penal County. And I don't like to have to continue to be the guy that has to explain to families why this happened to their children, to their loved one. So I think it is a very good use. It is money that the state has already allocated. We should 100% support it, and until those statistics change, which I don't foresee them changing right now, the trend is they continue to go up every month. And so we should absolutely take this money, use it appropriately, use it to help offset the cost that it, the burden on our resources as a county to try to fix something that isn't primarily our responsibility, but that is certainly affecting us, and we have an opportunity and an ability to help hopefully curtail this issue. I know that's a lot, but I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you some statistics, and I could go a lot more, but I think what we've talked about thus far is really kind of compelling as to why we are dealing with this issue and why it is what it is, which is a crisis.
I think that's helpful. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, Sheriff, when they change the name or this program comes out, could you get that to us or provide us that information? And then is there a chance that you could either share links to these statistics that you were talking about, these organizations that do have other, that have numbers and have done the research? Can that be shared with us at some level?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, yes, we'd love to get that. Some of this stuff does fall into law enforcement information only, but we'll make available any of that information. A lot of it comes out through a HIDA briefing. I would love to send that over to you. It's active information as to what's happening in the state of Arizona, these statistics, and how we can better deal with it. So, and this is not just the drugs, it's the human trafficking as well that's coming in, and that has an effect, too, and not just, they're recruiting our, you know, Americans to help in this. But yes, I can make those statistics available, and any information I get as it relates to what the Border Strike Force is going to become or how that starts to look, we'll brief you on that.
That'd be great. Thank you, Sheriff.
Just want to make sure that you'll give that to all of us, right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, if that's okay with Supervisor Miller? Now, yes, we'll make sure that all the supervisors have that information.
Not just me.
As often as I get it, I will send it over to you, as long as it is something that I'm able to send.
Yeah.
I just don't want Miller to outdo me, is all that's all. No, I think this is information, especially in light of some of the things, the issues that are out there. I think this is something that we could even help get the message out as to reason why we support these things. You know, some time ago, I shared an experience with one of my sons who was getting ready to go on his mission for the LDS Church, and he was traveling down the road. It was a beater car, ran out of, it overheated. He pulled off into one of the school districts, one of the schools there in Palominas, Arizona. Pitch dark, goes up, gets some water, and as he's filling up his radiator, a group of guys come up and jump him, beat him up, and if it wasn't for the janitor coming, pulling up, and they stole his car. And the local law enforcement, including Border Patrol and the Sheriff's Department and Sierra Vista P D, in a joint combined effort, did a roadblock, and they caught those guys. And they were illegal immigrants coming into this area, probably looking for something better in life, but there was one or two of them that had a criminal record in the past. And I think my son, well, all he was worried about was holding on to his wallet because he had $1,000 in there that he was going to use for his mission. He didn't care about the car. But the bottom line is, is that when we have the ability to support these kind of things and to stop some of this crime and things that are happening in our communities, and we have the funds available to us to make it happen, that's why I can see that we need to support these, and we appreciate the job and effort that you're doing, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. Chairman, might I add just one more thing? Penal County is unique. We play a major role in the flow of drugs and people into this country. I-10 Interstate becomes one of the main arteries where 50, over 50% of illegal drugs in America come through Arizona's borders. It inevitably makes its way likely through Penal County on the I-10 Interstate, the I-8 Interstate. Our positioning in this country, where we are at, and on the desert south end of our county, we not only get predominantly military-age men coming through, we become a main thoroughfare for majority of the humans and drugs that are coming in, especially drugs into this country. And we are uniquely positioned to have an impact, not just on Penal County, but on Arizona and the entire country. There are families across this country that rely on our ability to go out and effectively do our job with the equipment that we need so that we can stop these dangerous drugs from getting into the hands of just at least a few more Americans every day. So we are in a very unique position, an important position strategically, to stop the cartel's flow, or at least curtail it.
With that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item Number A G as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Natasha, can we do A I and A K together?
Yes, Chairman, we can. If we can approve, the recommendation is to approve Agenda Items A I and Items A K to Read American Rescue Plan Act.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve A I and A K as presented.
Is there a second?
Second. Did you need more of the title on that?
No, that's fine. He said as presented, and I stated it.
Okay, thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have that. Okay, we are now going to convene the regular meeting and go into flood control. And we have a motion on the consent agenda for flood control.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You ready for a motion?
I am, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items A through F of the Penal County Flood Control District Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, and that was the only thing on the flood control. So we'll convene back into the regular meeting. And we are on to public hearings, discussion approval, disapproval of case CSR-008-22, TriPoint Homes. Patrick Roberts.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Patrick Roberts, Senior Planner with Penal County. We're going to be covering CSR-00822 as a sign review committee case. The proposal is from TriPoint Homes, Arizona, Representative McKenzie Robinson, requesting approval of a comprehensive sign package to allow 14 total signs, six freestanding, of which six freestanding signs with a proposed aggregate sign area of 272 square feet, six temporary tenant signs with a total proposed area of 90 square feet, one wall, sorry, one wall sign with a proposed aggregate area of 8.6 square feet, and one American flag with proposed height of 60 feet. The proposed signage exceeds the sign code area maximum and quantity maximum for onsite signs for subdivisions, and the proposed American flag is an exempted signed type but is required to apply for a CSP comprehensive sign package as it exceeds the height maximum for the respective zoning. This property is on two parcels, 509100790 and 509101610, and as the staff report states that Supervisor District therefore is Supervisor Districts One and Two, which is incorrectly stated, it's right on the border of those two parcels. The subject site is located at 33580 North Maverick Mountain Trail for Sentinel at Oral Ridge Community, part of the Burghat Santon Heights P A D, and a portion of unincorporated Queen Creek. This is a map showing the approximate location within the county, up on the border of Queen Creek. Here's a vicinity map showing the location of the property. An aerial map showing the location of the subject properties. An area map indicating notification area for members of the public. This is a matrix of the signage that's being proposed, as mentioned. I would like to point out the Item One "Coming Soon" sign is double-sided, and that'll become relevant later on due to the requested dimensions of that signage. This is a signage plan showing the location of the signage proposed for the model complex for this mall home project, showing the location of the tenant flags, the American flags, the American flag requested signs, as mentioned. Here are some graphic images of the signage that's being proposed. The welcome signage, and the structural analysis of the American flag pole. The "Coming Soon" sign, as I mentioned, presents an interesting situation for the requested signage. It is 100, the addition of the secondary side, second side, breaches the requested sign code by a percentage of 196%. Otherwise, it would meet the requested, the permitted sign code. This map shows the location at the portion indicated on Thompson Road there, looking west, off the section of P4, south of, I believe, Rock Peak Drive.
So, Mr. Chair, so what I'm hearing you say is that because it's double-sided, is that's what's causing it to be more than what is allowed?
Exactly. A single-sided sign of this size would be permitted. The secondary sign increases the requested signage by just shy of 200%, so doubling of the requested signage.
They could actually make a bigger sign and still?
They could.
All right.
By a margin, yes. So, as my members for board consideration, the request is for approval of 14 total signs. The sign review-
They could actually make a bigger sign and still, okay, all right.
By a margin, yes.
Yeah.
So, as my answer for board consideration, the request is for approval of fourteen total signs. The sign review committee met regarding this case. The SRC recommended approval by unanimous vote of five to zero of an approval motion with one stipulation. Uh, the Community Development Director did not provide a recommendation then to approve or deny, and the county has received no public comment on the proposed signage. And staff recommends board supervisors approve the case with the following stipulations: CSR zero-zero-eight twenty-two, one stipulation. Upon issuance of the final residential construction permit for this subject subdivision, the sign described in case CSR oh-oh-eight twenty-two shall be removed, and I would like to state for the record that this item should reflect location Supervisor Districts number one and two. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Looks like not yet. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ask one more time for questions or comment, and if not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve as presented with one stipulation recommended by the sign review committee, as read into the record by our staff member, and knowing the parcels are in Supervisor Districts one and in District two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have that. Thank you. Item number eleven is another public hearing, discussion approval, disapproval, ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash PZ dash zero-two-six dash two-two. Evan.
Yes. Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chair, uh, my name is Evan Evangelopoulos, here with Pinal County Planning, and today, uh, I will present case PZ twenty-six twenty-two. It is a case in the southeast of the town of Florence, quite far off of Kelvin Highway. It is to allow for a guest ranch operation or on approximately seventy-three acres of land. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's two parcels. Max DeWitt is a landowner, Jason Sanks is the applicant, and it's located, as I mentioned, it's about nine miles southeast of the incorporated town of Florence, about one point six miles north of East Florence Kelvin Highway, and about a quarter mile west of north, north Cochrane Road in Pinal County. This is the approximate location, and this is the area. It's, there's a lot of pristine desert, beautiful desert out there. And these are the, these are the two parcels. This is the vicinity map in terms of parcels. There's BLM land and state land also nearby. The current zoning is general rural. The comprehensive plan designation is very low density residential, zero to one development units per acre. Uh, the proposed zoning is RU-ten, and this is an image looking north, looking south to the ranch itself, inside the ranch, looking east from inside, looking west, and looking west again. And items for board of supervisors' consideration, the use request is for a rezoning. The subject property is located within the very low density residential designation and complies with the comprehensive plan requirements. The property has legal access, and to date, concerns from a neighbor have been received. The owner has been working with the neighbors to address the issues, and this is a letter that, uh, we received past the packet submitted to the board of supervisors, and I think it is submitted to you as well regarding the concerns, but I, I have a follow-up on this issue, and the applicant himself will, uh, explain it a bit more. Also, granting of the rezoning will require after the time of zoning approval that the applicant-owner submit and secure from the applicable and appropriate federal, state, county, and local regulatory agencies all required applications, plans, permits, supporting documentation, and approvals, and the project would, will require a site plan approval after the rezoning approval. And the request is approval with four stipulations. Any questions?
Steve? Can you tell us the stipulations in public?
Yes, they're right here.
Yeah, but read them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, approval of his own change will require the time of application for development that the applicant-owner submit and secure from the applicable and appropriate federal, state, county, and local regulatory agencies all required applications, plans, permits, supporting documentation, and approvals. Second, all structures and permanent equipment shall be removed from access easements, public right-of-ways, and setbacks as necessary prior to site plan approval, and/or a public easement abandonment could be pursued by the owner to resolve any present issues prior to site plan approval. Any septic issues shall be cleared with the county prior to site plan approval. A portion of the subject site is in the flood plain, Zone A. Flood plain use permit may be required depending on the proposed improvements, and the flood plain use permits shall be approved prior to site plan approval and prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Okay, and these are, these would be standard requirements of any development, any place in the county, anytime?
That's correct.
Okay.
And these issues will be addressed. Okay.
And did you say the applicant is gonna present as well?
Yes.
I think now would be the time for that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chairman Sertie, Vice Chairman Kleren, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jason Sanks of Live Plan Consulting, Gilbert, Arizona. Go through a quick PowerPoint just to kind of augment what staff's already presented to you. Um, I'm also joined by the owner and operator of Ride Out Ranch, Max DeWitt. He's behind me. Just to reiterate, this is a residential, a rural zoning district request. It's compatible with the comprehensive plan, as noted by staff, and a guest ranch, uh, would be permitted within that zoning district, uh, should this be approved. So, it is a rural zoning district request. I wanted to provide the illustrative site plan. It's sometimes easier to read this than like a black line site plan where it's more technical. Um, you can see that there's a entrance gate that comes in off of Cochrane and then goes down where there's some horse stalls, um, some RV parking spaces, and they're kind of large parking spaces if you were to bring an RV or a large truck and pull a horse trailer, you could bring them in and park it. There's also what's called the ranch house. That's where the guests can kind of congregate before going out for a ride, perhaps share a meal, um, and meet the kind of ranch hand that will be on-site during their visits. Um, we've been, we actually went to three PNZ hearings on this, so we spent several actual hours with PNZ working through, uh, not only the details of the site, but the concerns from the neighbors that are to the north northwest of the site, uh, which have provided a letter to you after the packet date. I believe you received it, and it was noted in the presentation, and we've been working with them. Uh, the, Max has a applicable relationship with the Kittles, and, uh, Ms. Kittel is here today, and she'll present on her, on her own, of course. Max has also filled out a card to speak, but it's up to the board how they'd like to handle his, uh, speaking, if they want to do it before or after, uh, Ms. Kittel. But you can see there, there's also a storage building, and then there's some other horse stalls on the site, and many of the people bring their horses here and then go out into the trails and the wash and to the state and BLM lands, uh, nearby. It's a popular place for both, um, guests that come to the ranch, and then there's a lot of people that actually just come and just park on these roads and access the state and BLM lands, and they don't, they're not a part of the ranch. They just come out here because of the scenery and to ride their horses. Um, we've provided some trails, maps to give you some, uh, I mean, illustration of really the great trails that are available to guests that come to the ranch, and again, these are the same trails that are available to anybody visiting the state and, uh, BLM lands that are adjacent to the site. We've put specific notes. These maps go out to the ranch guests, of course, we don't control others, but for those that come to the ranch, we have specific notes to keep people off of, uh, neighbors' property. Specifically noted would be the Kittles' property so that, uh, their peace of mind can be preserved and knowing that we're guiding our guests away from their property. Again, uh, we note their private property, no trespassing in the big square to keep people away from their, their large property. Um, we had a recommendation for approval on January nineteenth, again, after three hearings. At the time in December, actually at the end of November, PNZ, although not requiring us, of course, but directed us in, firmly, to enter into perhaps a private agreement, uh, with the Kittles regarding, uh, operations, handing out maps, providing GPS devices to keep people off their property, putting up no trespassing signage. Um, Max has also worked with them on fencing on their property to keep people guided by the fencing to stay off of their property, and we went back and forth from January ninth through till very recently. I wanted to give you an update in case you've already seen this, but we've been going back and forth. They asked us to please retain legal counsel to do this, and they retained their own. So, there's been a private agreement that's been circulating between Max and the Kittles since January, and when I prepared this PowerPoint, since it's due in advance of the hearing, we hadn't heard back from their attorney, um, but we did hear back from them last night that the Kittles no longer wish to pursue a private agreement with Max because, um, ultimately, they were seeking that he would, uh, take liability for any guest actions on their property should that occur in the future. Max wasn't interested in taking liability of a private citizen's actions on their property should they be there or not for his property, but he is a good neighbor, uh, they have a good relationship, so fencing items, signage items, maps, GPS devices, all of that stuff they already do to be a good neighbor. And I'll let Max speak for himself, but we've been working at this for many months, and, uh, and he will continue to work with them. Uh, one thing to note is that the ranch is seasonal. It's already closed, actually, and won't reopen until November. It's too hot, too many snakes, um, but they are seasonal just, uh, five, six months of the year, uh, basically through the, uh, fall, winter, and early spring.
Can you take questions now?
Oh, sure.
So, who do you see as the typical customer visitor for this? Are they in-state that wants to go somewhere else? Are they out-of-state?
Uh, Chairman Sertie, mostly out-of-state. They would come in with their horses.
Okay.
They just stay, usually they stay a couple days.
Is there more?
No, I believe, I don't know if you've actually had an opportunity to read this, but these are the items that Max has gone to, to regulate activity of the guests on-site. If anybody violates the terms and conditions they sign when they come in, they're asked to leave the ranch. So, if they, uh, don't follow the maps, printed guidance, the GPS links that are provided to them, if they want them to keep them on the trails, um, they're asked to leave. If they were to trespass, for goodness sakes, of course, they'd be asked to leave. It's important to note that those are just the guests that come to the ranch, so if this were to be successful, at least it's organizing the people that are visiting these lands and telling them where to go and not to go, but anybody could drive up on these roads as, as they currently do and ride out onto the lands without any guidance or supervision from Max. Um, I think that's it.
Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, and I have two folks that want to speak. The first one will be Catherine Kittel. And if we can get your basic name and address or close to it.
My name is, I'm sorry, my name is Catherine Kittel, and, uh, I'm, my address is one-four-zero-zero-eight North Gila Dreamer Ranch Road in Florence, Arizona, and I'm here to represent my husband and I, who are private property homeowners, um, and adjoining property to the, um, ranch, Ride Out Ranch operation. And, uh, so I prepared this thinking that I was going to be doing three minutes, so, um, do you have the, the, uh, yes, okay. Uh, all right, this is, first is the, um, letter that I presented, the statement for the Board of Supervisors, um, and, um, according to the Post, the Public Post, I'm sorry, uh, which said that it should be returned, be no later than five o'clock on, um, a certain day, and then it was to say that it was a brief statement, and this is what I had prepared for that day, thinking that I would be doing three minutes only, but, um, actually, they closed at four-thirty, so I was...
I have a little bit of discretion on that, since this is your livelihood, it, we, we can let you go a little bit over on that, so.
Okay, 'cause this, all right. Uh, now, how do you want me to proceed, because I, these are actually the notes to help make me, help me be able to do three minutes, and this is what I presented, so what I would propose is that, um, I will take the numbers, if you want me to read for the public record what is on your statement, uh, I'll do that, and then I'll, I'll supplement with what I had in my notes, um, if that's okay with you. Okay, oh, and, okay. "The above parcels represented an adjoining property in the above referenced request for rezoning case of Ride Out Ranch presented by owner Max DeWitt, owner and agent representative Jason Sank. As owners of an adjoining property, we have attended the Prior Planning and Zoning Commission public hearings at which we have submitted important and relevant concerns of granting the rezoning of general rural to RU-ten. Granting such a zoning change would allow a completely for-profit guest ranch to operate within a residential private property area. Therefore, we will be present at the public hearing of April five and do wish to be heard. Presented below as requested is a brief statement of the, these concerns. Number one is in our area, we have no police protection, no fire department, and no medical emergency services for the rural area. Consequently, all full-time residents, we are essentially on our own to protect ourselves and our properties. There is no electric service for the area, no water service, no natural gas service, no trash and garbage service, and no sewer service, and in addition, no mail service." Um, so, uh, and my, my, uh, statement for that would be if there was a fire, it would destroy our homes in right, we're all very close. It could destroy our homes very quickly. And regarding the provision of these other services, um, the, no provision of those services, the permanent full-time homeowners had to make a substantial personal financial investment to build the infrastructure into their homes to provide these necessities for themselves, um, and not, and not all of the homeowners, uh, ourselves included, were, the permanent homeowners received a letter of notification for the neighborhood meeting that was held in April of twenty-twenty-two. Um, and so then, um, the second, the second, uh, item is, uh, another note I will make is regarding the electric. Uh, we, when we went to build our homes, they're, they're, they're adobe stick homes, they're permanent homes. We've lived, these, at least three of these people have lived there for eighteen years, and, um, fifteen to eighteen years, we've been there over eighteen years, and it has been a substantial investment. You do have obsolescence in a lot, in your batteries. You, you have to have made this investment, which we didn't think we were gonna have. First, we were told we would have it, and then after visiting with, uh, San Carlos, they rescinded their, their offer to, or telling us that we would have, uh, electric, and part of that reason was, um, they would have to go through elec-, uh, archaeological digs for every post they might have put in for power. Um, so we very possibly will never have electricity there. Um, now, the, the second one was the guests of the Ride Out are allowed to come and go as they please, and the Ride Out, uh, the ROR owner would not know if these guests are obeying all of the local, county, state, BLM, or private property laws, and that they hold the proper permits or licenses for their activities. Um, and they, uh, so, um, we would not know if the people who might trespass or do trespass, we have no idea if they're, if they have permits or not, and since we don't have a lot of, um, enforcement in our area, um... And since we don't have a lot of enforcement in our area, there, even the sheriff's department has problems. We only have two range officers who are not in our neighborhood always. And there's three enforcement agencies who are supposed to be doing enforcement for the area, the sheriff's department, the State of Arizona, and also the game and fish. And they don't have enough people to be there. So, and the third item is the road condition. Cochrane Road is a dirt road. It's classified as a primitive road and is not regularly maintained by the county. The three traffic stops, which a day, as estimated by the owner, which is in the packet with the site plan and the application, equates to 180 trips per month of heavy horse trailers and trucks on the road that also create increased dust around the residences in the area. And so with regard to number three, that, I have, I have, I want to look, if you could look first at number eight on the list, which is the types of plans for expansion in the future of the operation that is, has been in operation already, but with, with just the rural zoning. What are the types of plans in the future as stated on the owner application for rezoning? Once they get the rezone, what are those expansion probabilities or possibilities or plans? We don't know. And so for the next item on my list, I'm going to combine number four. And well, the, for, excuse me, before I leave, the road condition. If there is expansion, at the moment, we still have this problem, but that more heavy horse trailers and trucks means more trips per month, worsening the primitive dirt road condition and creating unhealthy increased dust around the residences.
Okay, in, in order to keep up with time, we all have, you're, you're reading what you've handed to us, so we all see this. Does the applicant have these questions as well? Because you are generating questions that I want to ask when we come back around to the applicant. So do they have a copy of this as well?
Yeah, we, we've been, both of us, all at all three. And if, now, if you want me to provide additional information with regard to any of these concerns, I'd be happy to do that because so many of these concerns, we could not bring up, they were, we couldn't put any, any stipulations in because the county said they couldn't enforce any of these, a lot of these items.
So like you said, you have, you are making me want to ask a bunch of questions. So we see the rest of your presentation here, so we will try to get to those questions and...
Okay.
All right, so.
And so I will state for down at the bottom with regard to the, then the requirements that the state trust land would have and the BLM would have for the usage of their property. There are, they have rules and regulations all of their own. And some of them can be pretty stiff, but so I'm, and from the last hearing, well, I'll get to that in a moment. Okay, well, you've got all of those things and you see that our concern is the health and safety of, of us as residents and, and how we would ask you to carefully consider since it was not a unanimous vote, there were two by the commissioners, there were two denial votes in accordance with how it's worded in the, in the documents from this county. And so there must have been conditions or reasons, concerns that they would have had for doing that as well.
Okay, so I think my colleagues and I are prepared to ask, get some answers to some of these questions, so.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. Max DeWitt.
All right. My name is Max DeWitt. I'm the landowner that we, for this property that we've been discussing, Ride Out Ranch. I can give you a brief history and then I'm sure you guys will have some questions after. Basically, this land has been in my family for 15, 20 years. It's kind of always been our spot where we get to go outside and be outside and enjoy the beautiful desert that's just right down the street from here. 2019, 2020, right in there, we were having so many friends over and hanging out at this spot and when the weather was nice that kind of, my dad had just sold his company and kind of had tools and free time and started kind of building it to be a place that we could share with not just our friends and family, but other people who'd like to go out and ride out there. It sort of organically turned into something a little bit bigger where we had some hookups, some horse stalls. And then we put a website related to it, then it's kind of something more commercial and that's when we kind of have these conversations with rezoning and everything. So we've been working on this rezone for, you know, a year now. We've been talking quite a bit with the Kitchells. They've been at every meeting. We've met in person multiple times. We've found solutions to every possible problem that they have presented. Basically, there's been a lot of conversation regarding an agreement between Ride Out Ranch and our neighbors, the Kitchells. We have not been able to make this agreement, not due to any reason on our end. We've really wrote out everything that they've asked us. And when we had our attorneys present it exactly how they presented it to us, what they wanted to see, they then added, they want me to be liable to fence all 120 acres of their property if any of my guests trespass onto their 120 acres. It's kind of a liability that I don't think anybody is going to take on. They could go pay a guest to stay at my ranch and have them trespass and I'm liable to fence 120 acres of desert. A big portion of that land runs through the Boxo Wash, if you guys are familiar with it. It's a river four or five days out of the year. It is a humongous wash. It is not very fenceable. So what we already did is I went down into the wash and I didn't put up fencing, but I put up signage that will direct our guests and anyone else who finds their way into the Boxo Wash around the Kitchells property. Like we've already discussed, we have printed maps, we have guided GPS links that we share with our guests, all to just share the nice, wonderful desert that's out there, but also direct guests away from the Kitchells property. So yeah, we're doing the very best we can to, you know, meet their concerns for trespassing and anything else. They were talking about dust. I think it's really important to note that they're the only property that wouldn't be affected by anybody, any of our guests driving past their residence. Basically, Cochrane Road is one way in, one way out. The ranch is before their property, so our guests aren't driving past their property. As the crow flies, our ranch house to their house is more than three quarters of a mile away. All of our close neighbors, neighbors who can actually see our ranch house, actually deal with our guests that drive past, they all showed up to the meeting in April of 2020, 2022. And we're very supportive, in fact, hopeful in, you know, getting this to progress and get the rezoning approved. All right, I'm sure you guys got questions for me.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Did I look on, did I see on here someplace where the trails are on state trust land?
Yes, sir.
So how do you accomplish permitting for those people? Because I go, I go out four-wheeling and I have permits for state trust land, but everybody's supposed to have their own for their family or individual. So how do you accomplish that?
Yeah, so when a guest registers to come stay at our ranch online, that's one of the things that they are directed to do to get a permit. If they plan on riding on state trust land, they're directed to obtain a permit.
And, and you check that when they get there and say, hey, do you have your permit?
We have not yet because it's just barely brought to our attention recently at the last hearing. So moving forward, that is the plan.
And I know you can do it online, just pretty quick.
Yeah.
The, the other question I had was how many RV sites do you have?
14.
14?
Yes, sir.
So when you're over six, you're, you're an RV campground. So you, have you worked that out? You're, you're an RV resort essentially when you're over six, is my understanding.
Can I interrupt? So Natasha, we're, this is a public hearing, can we ask questions the same as if you were the presenter?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that question.
That's, that's my understanding for some other issues we've had in Hidden Valley, Thunderbird Farms, is when they have horse properties, you want people over if they have more than six sites, that they then become an RV resort business and that's a problem.
Yeah, you know, there's other operations, horse camps, what people call them, that are nearly identical to ours in Pinellas County. When we first started the conversation with Evan, we referenced those and I think that's where the RU-10 zoning came from. Those other ones are actually quite a bit larger. So hopefully what we're doing, I'm just kind of trusting everybody else's input on this.
Okay. Evan, I see you squirming. Did you have an answer?
It's a guest ranch.
It's a guest, okay.
So it's a whole different operation.
Okay, thank you.
So how, how are you paid? How are the fees collected?
It's just an online link. So people can just go online, schedule online, I get a confirmation and they pay that way.
But there's no one there monitoring it?
There is.
There is someone, there is going to be a camp host.
Yeah, we have wonderful camp hosts that come stay for about six months. They're here all winter, they come from Missouri. Yeah, so they're there 24/7. Really, there, there was one day they had to leave last year because their horse colled and they both had to leave, but...
I saw somewhere in here it says it's maxed out at 40 horses. What happens if 42 horses show up? What?
We just haven't had it happen. There's a lot more horse stalls than there is what we actually need. There's 14 hookups and 40 horse stalls.
But the hosts stay back at the headquarters, these folks do take off riding, what is to keep them from going right past a sign right onto the Kitchells property? I mean, just...
Yeah, I mean, not just my guests could do that, but anybody out there could. Yeah, I guess if somebody wants to ride past a sign that says no trespassing violators will be prosecuted, then it's up to them.
Okay.
But yeah, it's very important to note, if you're familiar with the area, my guests are riding horses. There's hundreds of people out there on the weekends when the weather's nice, riding quads, dirt bikes, UTVs, ATVs, all that stuff. So we're not the only ones with concerns for trespassing.
I promised would get her questions answered. Steve, do you?
Yeah.
Just a couple of general questions.
Yes, go ahead.
How many other residents are out there? Because I hear you talk about they're driving past other residents. I mean, just in general, is there 20 or 30 or is there 10 or is there five or?
Yeah, you know, right off of Cochrane Road, there's probably 10 to 15.
Really?
Yeah. And a handful more, a handful of them are only there part-time, a handful are full-time. Our direct neighbors are wonderful people. They've been really supportive, really kind. We've got a really good relationship where when we're closed down, there's not somebody physically there. They're stopping by, checking in on things, making sure everything's all right for us and we share resources with them as well. So it's a good relationship.
Okay, and in the, in the, in the pictures or in the presentation, there appears to be some, I don't know, small, I don't know, there are many houses or whatever they are, and they are there and you have installed those or is that futuristic?
They're there. There's a really good chance they'll just be removed, just depending on this, this easement that goes right through there. We didn't realize it was a 100-foot wide easement when it's like a eight-foot wide trail.
Okay.
And we've talked with Stacy Brimhall, who's a family friend who put that easement in there, we kind of talked with him through it and he said if we need to get rid of it, we can. But those tiny houses might move.
They might move.
Yeah, they're, they're sitting there right now. There's a good chance we'll just get rid of them.
So, I mean, did you, I hate to ask this question, but did you permit them or, I mean, how did they, where'd they, how many square feet are they?
They're small. They're like 10 by 12 inside.
So they're not even 200 square feet?
No, they're really small.
How about, and they're, what do you do for water? Do you have a well?
Yes.
You have a well? And you're, you are looking at septics for the future or do you have any septics now?
There is septic there now.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there a, is there a license for service or alcohol service at this location?
No alcohol.
Anything else, Mr. Kavanaugh?
I see the picture, it says Buffalo Bar. Is that the same place?
Oh, yeah. Somebody just made that sign. My dad shot a buffalo a long time ago and somebody made that sign and put it up there. It's not a bar, though. It's just a kitchen.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the, butts against private property, but also BLM?
Yes, sir.
I once had a tour guide's license and I had to be CPR certified, et cetera. Is anybody up there to do any kind of, you know, what if there is an emergency up there? She mentioned that there are two range officers for this county the size of Connecticut. They may not be in the area, so.
Oh, that, you know, besides just general first aid equipment, no, we don't have anybody specifically there for that reason.
Mr. Goodman, you had a question a bit ago.
I do, there's a, there's a few to get to, to some of the questions that have been asked by the, the, the young lady that was up here earlier. And I think this might, these might be geared towards more towards our staff and some of the questions. The amount of, with this type of zoning that we're going to or that we're being asked to go to, what, what parameters do they have as far as growth?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, how much expansion can they, because obviously they're advertising this, they want it to grow even bigger to some degree. I'm thinking.
Sure. The comprehensive plan has a certain density requirement. In terms of densities, in terms of guests, this is what we generally go for in a way. It's point one developing units per acre. So you could say it's 73 acres, ideally following the comprehensive plan, 73 guests, I could say. I'm just thinking out loud right now. And regarding growth, the zoning code has specific requirements for guest ranches. So this is a guest ranch and the reason we're, we're changing the zoning to RU-10 is because guest ranches are allowed in the RU-10 zone. But the, the code has a separate section that describes the requirements for guest ranches. So the applicant would have to follow the exact requirements of the code for guest ranches. And some of these issues also will apply at the site plan level.
Okay. And then as far as the septic system that's there currently, can it hold the capacity of those 14?
That is a great...
Or is there a dump station or anything like that?
I don't have the answer to that. That's a great question, but that will be addressed at the site plan level also.
Okay.
Every site plan has to go through a septic review.
So that's in the next, that's in the next, okay. I just want to make sure that many of these questions and things of that nature are dealt with. And then as far as the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, it's a dirt road.
Yes.
Is there requirements that they're going to have as far as, say, dust mitigation or anything like that?
Quite possibly. I cannot give you an answer again, but traffic and engineering will review the case also.
Okay, for the next level.
For the next level. And right now, Cochrane Road is not a county-maintained road. It is a public right-of-way, but it's not a county-maintained road. So that might change. It doesn't mean that it will stay this way. The county and traffic may decide and right-of-way, obsessive public works may decide, since that we have increased traffic here, we may decide to start maintaining the route.
Yeah, okay. I've actually been to this place, by the way.
Oh.
Yeah.
The desert, it's just gorgeous out there. It's beautiful.
When you mentioned Stacy, I, we took a little tour up to his boulder area. It's really, I'm telling you, you know, as a kid growing up, as a native Arizonan, grew up in East Mesa, Apache Junction area, sorry, I couldn't wait to get out of that area off of Chris Monroe because it was too desert. And so we moved into closer into town. But I go out there with Stacy now or somebody else and I'm telling you, it's, you know, I can see why you live out there in the desert with the landscaping and everything else, something that I didn't learn to appreciate when I was younger, that I'm beginning to see it, so. But yeah, these are type of questions and can be, that we need to be, make sure that this, assuming this all happens, that, that the Dewitts and, and that they're... that this, assuming this all happens, that, that the Dewitts and, and that they're doing the certain things that the county requires, because there are requirements that we have to maintain these roads, to, to the septic systems and things of that nature to accommodate these kinds of things. So, but yeah, I, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or discussion?
I have one more statement, too. One more comment that I'd like to make. You know, you talk about law enforcement. I mean, my biggest district, we're probably, in our district alone, we have such a lack of fire protection and anything of that nature in our area. And we, you know, the amount of, and it's just that everybody's constrained on what they can do. And so if Santa Valley can live with 10, 10 officers for a hundred-something thousand people, you know, I think that the response time is still of our law enforcement and our emergency services is still pretty well. But I, to the point of making sure that somebody has some emergency background or some, being able to do some first aid is probably very imperative and something like this, especially at a guest ranch.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To the, to Supervisor Goodman's point, you know, at, at Country Thunder, we've required them to have water tankage for water to put fires out. Is there something like that on your property?
You have a huge tank. I forgot how many thousands of gallons it holds, but yeah, we're, we have a well that pumps into a big tank and the main part of the campground where the people stay. And we're talking about almost 80 acres. A big portion of it is in the box of wash. It's never going to get touched. So basically, we have gravity-fed water that feeds to the whole campground.
Sure, but through the stables and the housing area, or the tiny houses that we saw in the RV area, you would have the facility or the ability to put out a fire if you have hoses to do that?
Yeah. And one of the things we've actually spoke about with Kitchell's is, and it's in all of our rules and regulations that everybody signs off prior to getting to the ranch, is that if they have a campfire, that it needs to be in a contained space that we provide. So we actually have fire pits that we provide. Keeps it small, keeps it contained.
Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, I, what I understand is we're voting on a rezoning. If the zoning goes through, then you're going to have a series of hoops to jump through to do, to fulfill your dream. I'm just going to say it that way, because there's a lot more that goes with this. All those permits, all those requirements, I think you may at some point see them kind of overwhelming. But to, to the, to public safety as far as police, fire, ambulance, everybody that heads out on a four-wheeler every weekend deals with that. I mean, I, I just don't even, I, I, I mean, you take that risk, you know what you're doing when you go out there to do that, because you know that there's nobody out there that's going to be right immediately available to address your needs should, should you be fall an accident at some point. So, I mean, we can't, we cannot regulate or provide a level of safety in every scenario in our society. It's just not, or it would just not be, you know, you wouldn't be able to do anything, I guess. So, you know, if, if I go online and I want to go ride a horse and, and I signed up to come out there, I know that there's no ambulance sitting out there waiting for me to fall off the horse. So it's just, I, I think people have to have self-reliance, they have to take care of themselves and understand what their, their risk is in anything they do.
Yes, sir.
So, but I, I do want to, I, I mean, I think that the, I guess, the guest ranch zoning is an option here. If you put in 14 units out there, there's going to be a size that you're going to be required to build a septic system for. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that are going to happen should you go down that path. And I just, I just want to say that, because I think there's a lot more, a lot more steps that are going to happen should you get the zoning for this piece of property.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion or questions?
Lady's back there raising her hand.
Natasha, can she come back? Yes. Couple additional questions.
Yes, Supervisors, I have a statement to make. We did not ask the Mr. Dewitt to acquire an attorney to do this site agreement. I didn't even mention anything about it because we were told it had no purview with regard to whatever the decisions would be by the commission or, and this would be our last opportunity to give you some of our concerns since the county would, said we couldn't present them except by ourselves. And then they weren't enforceable by the county. Mr. Sanks came over when, when we didn't, we weren't, we weren't planning to have an attorney. We were working with Max. We're neighbors. We wanted to be a good neighbor. We didn't know Max because he doesn't live there. There's no residence on the property and he doesn't live there. So our first introduction to this was with the yellow card. So, and we did not, we, we, we as being good, good neighbors, Max, we all, we have worked together. But when we found that we couldn't mention anything about that agreement, we've already, we had already spent a lot of attorney fees to work in good faith like we were all trying. And then at the last hearing, we were told that it, we couldn't talk about it because it had no bearing on what the decisions would be. And so that, and some of the, the last, well, I, I guess I can't tell you about it either, but we probably both incurred, we were told that it was required by the county. And in the agreement, it said that if we gave, if we gave, signed the agreement, we were giving the approval for them to operate. And we never were, that was never in our mind. They were already operating. We, we didn't oppose the application because it had already been done without us knowing. They had already been operating for years without this particular zoning. So, and we, Max did offer and he did put some T-posts up on our south border, but we did not ask him, we never considered that he would have to fence our entire 160 acres. No, we've done that before. But when the wash runs, it will take certain areas of fencing away. So we had, after they got the recommendation at the lower level, thought it was over. We had already contacted a contractor to come to redo all of the fencing and make it more substantial than just being able to clip a barbed wire fence. And, and also to, the, the storms have taken away the roads, a huge area in our road to the wash, so we have no way to get to the wash. And even when if we could stop people who were coming onto our property through the signs, the burden was on us to find out who they were and then give that, and then if there was any damage, get submit invoices and go back. And we couldn't enforce it. If the county couldn't enforce it, if the sheriff said they couldn't enforce it unless we got license plate numbers or something like that when we saw people do it. But we're way up above the wash and our wash is a half a mile wide. And people, wherever they want to, and they have, they, they were riding because one of, two of those trails that were created went across our property. And we don't, we haven't seen the maps, so I don't know. Max did say he took those off of our property. But, so, you know, we, we just, we're, you're going to use the money that we spent for the attorneys to put these better unclipable fences up all around our property. And, and so we did not expect, and if, and if he wants to take the signs that he put up on the southern border where he directs the people to come out, well, we'll give them back to him. Because we had planned to do other things in order to ameliorate this situation. And so that's where we ended, at the end of the last thing, and we... So I don't know if it has any bearing. We were told this would be our last opportunity to bring up these items.
Supervisor Miller would like to ask you a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who, who directed you, or who told you you couldn't use the agreement?
The county attorney.
The county attorney?
Mm-hmm.
At the planning and zoning meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That it had no relevance to the project?
It had no bearing on their decisions.
Bearing on the decision.
And it was, were not within their purview.
But in a sense, to me, would be part of the public comment.
It was determined that it was a third-party agreement and it, and so they had no way to deal with a third-party agreement. And so they told us that we could not mention that.
Because I might need a little help on understanding that, because that doesn't compute in my mind.
Well, I have the minutes. I did down, I've downloaded the minutes. No, sir, I'm not.
I believe you. I mean, I just trying to, I'm trying to understand, because so many times this, a lot of this stuff is just either misunderstanding, communication. It's all about the communication. And I just, you know, I wanted to be clear, if there was something that was missing in that communication from your side or the other side, either way, that's not, it's unfortunate.
Mr. Billingsley has some input.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I hope that I can shed some light on the subject.
Okay.
As mentioned, from the applicant, this went three times to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And at, at the first meeting, it was requested that as part of the P&amp;Z's consideration, a number of stipulations be added to, to the case in order to get a favorable recommendation. Many of the issues that have been discussed at length today were items that were brought forward as for inclusion in, in that individual case. And the county's recommendation, the county attorney's office recommendation was, there's two primary considerations to have when stipulations go forward under our code and under Arizona state law. One of those is enforceability. Is that something the county can enforce? The other one has to do with provision of exactions, which there is considerable case law on. And it was the feeling at that time, the number of things that were being asked, fencing by a private party, how do you want to say?
Red, can I ask?
Yeah.
That was stipulations that the Planning and Zoning Commission was trying to put into this, to the?
They were requested by, by the, by the neighbors in order to have a favorable result. And essentially, the county attorney's office said, those would constitute exactions, or they would be unenforceable by the county. You must have a license to do this, you must have a review for that, things that aren't under the county's purview. So what was recommended to the board at that time from the county's attorney's office was, Mr. Dewitt and his neighbors should get together and do a third-party agreement that's not a stipulation as part of a zoning case, so that they can come to agreement on, on how to satisfy the challenges between the two parties. We then had a second meeting and at the, at the second meeting, there still wasn't agreement. And so there was a third meeting. And there was an effort made in between the second and the third meeting with respect to the agreement. County staff did not tell either party they had to get an attorney. They chose to have attorneys and it was a third-party agreement between those parties. The, the county wasn't involved in, in negotiating between those two parties or, or at the meetings when they negotiated, if that helps.
Yeah, it does help. And thank you for that explanation. Just the, the two meetings that, were they tabled? Were they continued?
They were continued.
They were both continued?
If I remember right, is that, is that correct, Evan? They were continued?
They were continued.
And they similarly to today had very long public meetings and, and discussion, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. It's a little bit clearer to me now.
With regard to the legal part, the third-party agreement, we were, we have, I have emails. Max was the one who told us that the county told him that we had to now have a formal agreement. We were, we, we didn't, we said, and it was, he wrote two paragraphs. You know, I don't, I, this, we, we've tried to avoid, we've tried to be... Can I continue? So I, so you'll understand. We do have emails at different times in all of these instances when we have tried to work something out as neighbors. And then we would have something that says, oh, the county wants this. The county says you, we have to do this now. I imagine they have legal fees, too. But, but Jason did come over to us and say he would get, he would get an attorney while we were sitting there after we were like, wow, now we have to have this, a formal agreement. And he came, we didn't tell them they had to get an attorney for us or start this. We didn't even have an attorney until they were going to, they were going to put the stuff down for the agreement. And we didn't have anything to go on as, as a formal legal agreement until January 9th. And the hearing was on, the last hearing was on January 19th.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Kitchell?
I'm good.
Okay. So, yeah, I, unless we have more questions for you, I mean, we can
Okay.
filibuster forever, so.
If there's anything else that you want, if there are any of the supporting documents that we have for what concerns we have set before you, we, we love our property just as much as any of the other people out there. That's why we moved there. And we took on the responsibility for caring for our property and our house in every way we could. And so I thank you and I appreciate the time that you've given us today.
All right. I didn't close the public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? So I am now going to close the public hearing. Any more discussion among the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
I'll entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone this to a date certain, that being May 24th, to allow us more time to investigate the issues. I see that there's a bar in the background, they're serving food, there's 14 units, plus the sheds, plus the others. And I think that we should do more research. A motion into postponing to May 24th.
Okay, I'm going to make some comments on that. So this place is already closed for the summer, correct? So there is no emergency to, to rush this through, since it's already closed. Nothing's going on there now. So if anybody wants to entertain a second on that, just ponder that.
Does it continue, really?
To continue is the motion, yes.
To?
For more, more clarification on what exactly is, the activities are going to go there.
If we could continue, it's left open. Table it to a date?
I believe you said May 20 something 4th.
24th.
May 24th?
Yeah.
To continue to May 24th?
Continue to May 24th. I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if I might just clarify, because you have already held the public hearing, is it this board's intent to reopen that public hearing at May 24th, or to just consider the item again at May 24th so that the board? item again at May 24th, so that the board can communicate with staff or anyone from the department to clarify issues that they may still have?
Since Mr. Kavanaugh made the motion, I'll let him respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think there'd be any harm in reopening the public comment section. So I would include a public comment on May 24th.
Well, I agree. This is important for the quality of life of the neighbors, so... Does that have to be in the motion?
I think it would be appropriate for when we post it the next time, so that the public would know that there will be another public hearing component at that time of the 24th.
Mr. Kavanaugh, can you remake that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we would, I don't know if the proper term is table this item until the 24th, and include a public comment, period.
The, the item would be to continue it to the 24th.
Continue it. Okay.
Yes, okay, forgive me. Continue.
I'll second it.
And that is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No. Sounded like three to two?
Yeah.
Yes, Chairman, that is correct. That motion passes three to two.
Okay. We're on to item number 11. Nope, no, item number 12. Discussion approval disapproval of resolution number 040523-RD22-090, abandonment of a portion of Nodak Road.
Good morning, Chairman Surti, or good afternoon, Chairman Surti, members of the board. Celeste Garza, Assistant County Engineer with the Public Works Department, here to present 12, 13, and 14. All of these easements are located in District 5. This first one here is on the Nodak Road alignment. This is located in the mining camp area. Mr. Lee Cooper and his neighbors maintain a private drive along the Nodak Road alignment. It does not restrict anybody from legal access. To the west is Arizona State Land Department, which he did get the commissioner's signature on the petition, and then the two different property owners to the east. So this will still serve as a private ingress/earist to these two property owners, but will not continue to the south. Utilities were in agreement with the abandonment. This is the private drive, which kind of goes south from the Jacob Waltz alignment. Any questions I can answer?
Are there any questions? I don't see any. This is a public hearing, and I've actually have some requests to speak, and that would be Lee Cooper.
I won't need to speak.
Okay. Carolyn Cooper?
What?
Or Laura Cooper? It's a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 12 as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 13. Discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Don't go ahead.
Discussion approval disapproval of another abandonment on Kinnick Sue.
That's correct. Our next one is on Kinnick Sue. This is between Grand and Main, so this is located more in the northern Gold Mine area, the north, north of Metcallops and west of the Ironwood Road area. This gentleman would like to place a home on the property, and there's kind of constrained from the washes. Again, there's really no legal or physical access. All of the access is maintained, is acquired from the west, which would be the Kinnick Sue alignment up to Grand, and then from Main to the east. So here's some photos. So that's the alignment looking west down from Main, and this is looking from Grand, from the east. Any questions I can answer?
I see no questions. This is a public hearing, and I have several that might want to speak. Tom Vukovich.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board Supervisors. Thank you very much. Just wanted to say, I, yeah, I would like to see this abandoned. I actually have a permit for that garage that you saw in a picture there that they gave me, saying this was abandoned already, so I thought this was a mute point already. My neighbor, if that easement is there, I don't even know how far down I would be affected of, people have been building there since, I think, this 1958, and how many structures, homes, lives would be ruined for this easement, so I just ask you, you could please just abandon it.
Okay. Thank you. Sally Weaver Gates?
I just want to say to that, that, you know, he makes 1958 sound like a long time ago. It's not. Just...
Sally Weaver Gates.
I'm, I'm Tom's neighbor, and I just wanted to quickly say I, I am in favor of approving it also.
Okay. And Richard Gates?
I'm Sally's husband. She has lived there for over 40 years. I haven't been there quite that long. When she first moved there, Kinnick Sue was an unmaintained road, is nothing more than a path. She would drive down that road and into her property, and you've already seen one of these pictures. I don't know how this works. I have some pictures I'd like to show you. The first picture is looking east off of Grand Road. When my wife first moved there, she would drive down Kinnick Sue and straight into her property. These pictures are also the easement. The easement runs the length of our property, which is 20% of an acre and a quarter. I consider that a pretty good chunk of it. It's our driveway. It's also our front yard. Our mobile home was put there 40-some years ago, and it faces north. It does not face Grand Avenue. It's just a few feet from my front patio to this easement. There are trees, cactus there, that are 40, 50, 75 years old, I don't know. I would just hate to see all of this plowed down by some heavy piece of equipment, digging a trench or some other thing across there. It's also a barrier to my neighbors to the north. You know, in the city, you guys have block walls separate you from your neighbor. I have this easement. It sure would be a peace of mind to know that this easement is going to be abandoned, and I don't have to worry about it continuously. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. What, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number, what is that, 13? As presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 14, discussion, another abandonment. Celeste is back up. Concho and Charleboy.
Concho Street and Charleboy, Charleboy surrounds a parcel of 119, 019. In this map, you can see it's a piece of Charleboy on the east, and then Concho Street to the south. The location of how the roads that are maintained in the area, you go east on Concho, up on Prospector, and then east again on Windsong. So nothing really connects as far as what we have county maintained or county used in this area. These other surrounding parcels have access off of Foothill Street or Windsong to the north. They're, they're larger in size than we'll typically see on these abandonments. They're planning to build a home, and you can see in this photo a little bit, it looks like they've done some grading work on the property. Here again, they're on the east side of this kind of property line between the two parcels where they're planning to build their home. Utilities were also in agreement with this abandonment, no objections, and I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? I don't see any, so I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 14 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item 15, discussion approval disapproval of a big, long resolution for an easement. Joe Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Pinau County Public Works Deputy Director.
Not reading that number.
This, as, as you may know, is a request from staff to accept a grant of easement for roadway and public utilities, which is located at a portion of Judd Road, specifically beginning at Marchant Trail, continuing east for 660 feet. For the, just a little more clarification on location, this is, this is on the far west of Gary Road, towards the end, as it almost butts up against Maricopa County. This is affecting the north 50-foot parcels 50920, 011E, and 50920, 011F, and is located in the Santan area, supervisory District 1. This is, this is a request to formalize and clean up this location. We currently maintain that segment of Judd Road and have been doing so for 30-some years, so this will actually give us Pinau County a easement to legalize that maintenance. So I can take any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. This is not a public hearing, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 15, a resolution number 040523-RD22-088.
I'll second that brave reading of the resolution number.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Did you get a second?
Ayes have it. And Joe is going to stay up and talk about number 16.
Yes. Item 16 is staff recommending the acceptance of a lease agreement, where the Pinau County is the landlord, and Stanfield Fire District, also known as Stanfield Volunteer Fire Department, is the tenant, and the location of the Pinau County building is 36697 West Papago Drive in Stanfield, Arizona. The leaseee desires to enter into a lease for a portion of this building to use as a fire station, with terms of three years at an annual $1. This lease shall automatically renew for one successive three-year term, unless terminated by either party. This is another formalization of the occupancy of Stanfield Fire District. They have been occupying this building for several years now, so we're trying to get it formalized. This is also a building that is shared with another tenant onsite, being the Stanfield Potters. So between the Stanfield Potters and the Fire District, they'll be responsible to pay their, their proportional share of the electric for their occupancy. I can't answer any questions. This does not require unanimous approval, as FYI, since this is another government entity, so...
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 16 as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it passes.
Thank you.
Item 17, discussion approval disapproval to allow an exempt employee in the Treasurer's Office to work overtime at straight time. Mike McCord slash Angie Woods.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisors. Yes, so the situation is that from an audit that was conducted, there were some things recognized by that audit that would make my office and the Office for Budgeting and Finance to communicate, there should be a better communication between the T-Rock system and the E1 system. Our IT staff within the Treasurer's Office is able to take on this responsibility and to do the integration. The dilemma is, is that we have several other bigger projects going on within the Treasurer's Office for tax, the tax roll season, and it would require one of my staff members to take on additional hours. So what we're asking the board for is to approve straight time for those additional hours that would be worked to get this project completed.
So, Mr. Chairman, so instead of paying overtime to a, a person, a one person, you're just going to pay them straight time? Or you're bringing another person in and paying them straight time? No, just...
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair McClure, where it's, it's one person that already works for the Treasurer's Office, and we're just going to pay him additional straight time. So he already works 40 hours a week. This will probably make him work maybe 50 hours a week, so we would, those additional 10 hours would just be straight time as opposed to overtime pay.
And this person's probably okay with that?
Yes.
Oh.
Labor laws allow that? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
There's no shackles on his chair or anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
Other than if he was to leave the county, because we don't want to lose him.
All right. That sounds like those were the questions, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes.
Is this person in a management, or some, in the exempt position, other than title, do they, do they have the duties of a manager or administrator?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Kavanaugh, he is not.
So legally, can we do this, under the Fair Labor Standards Act?
He, he is a sys, sorry, he is a system administrator. Sorry, too many titles.
Okay. And this, so does he supervise other employees and, and approve their time sheets?
Yes.
Okay.
No further questions?
And could we, could we get advice from the county attorney on this, if this is, if this falls under the reasonable relationship test and all those other FLS savings?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes, this is an exempt employee, that it's very similar to the things that we occasionally do during emergency situations, and we have sheriff's personnel or other supervisory personnel that are exempt that work overtime. We will pay them straight time for that, that time period that they are doing it, so yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. If no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 17 as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Discussion for requests for future agenda items, as you'll see, I'm asking for one, and that is clarification at a work session regarding, with all of the developers that are now going towards rentals, do they in fact need to comply with a 100-year water supply certificate? And any discussion regarding that? And Steve, you'll have input on that, I'm sure, but I would like to see that discussed in public. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like a, a discussion and a work session and a later agenda item to establish guidelines for, for county support in, in bonds and so on, to, to establish guidelines on what we should and should not do, and what prompts this is our, is our supportive lucid, since we approved the, oh, I think, almost quarter-billion-dollar purchase of land, their stock is down 68%, and they're laying off 1,300 people. And so I think we need... And so I think we need to establish overall guidelines to keep us constrained from entering to agreement.
I think they have that recorded. Anyone else? That is everything on the regular agenda. We, except for number 20.
We have, yes, we do have item number 20 yet.
We're going to vote on that.
Okay, we are going to vote on this. This is one that we discussed earlier in Exec. Discussion approval disapproval for authorization for counsel to file a petition to, for review.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Keller, County Attorney's Office, as you mentioned, we had discussed and briefed you on the legal aspects of this case in executive session. We are seeking approval from this board to file a petition in the Supreme Court challenging the ruling out of the Court of Appeals in this matter. I can also report to you that recently, Yavapai County, because this is a consolidated case, Yavapai has a similar situation, and their board has recently approved filing a petition in the Supreme Court. Any questions?
Questions? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve counsel to file a petition for review concerning Machu Picchu Holdings LLC versus Pinau County at all.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That is all of our regular business. We are now going to, since we've already voted to go into Exec, we're going to go back into Exec. Mr. Thomas, how are you? To get out of Exec, right? Yes, to come out of Exec.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we're out, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.